Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening and welcome to the 5:15 City Council Meeting of October 17th, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to everyone. We have some Road Runners in the House. Raise your hand if you're a Road Runner, and Runners up. All right, there we go. Good for you. And VC students also, Go Gates. Thank you for being here, and it's always great to have our students participate in this process. We have now the privilege of having Pastor Max Van Dyk from Christ Cathedral. He's going to lead us in the invocation. Pastor Van Dyk and his lovely bride. Pastor, a very dynamic church. They care a lot about our community. It's always been a pleasure to see how much they really care about our community. And then following the invocation, we have the honor of having Megan Border, a senior at Liberty High. Go Patriots! And she's going to lead us in the pledge. Megan was selected because of her outstanding achievements, and her mom, who's sitting next to her, thinks the same thing, too. She's received the highest GPA possible all four years, ranked at the top 3% of students at Liberty High. She participates in the Honor Society on campus, chairman of Assistines of Bakersfield, treasurer of the Girls of Engineering Math and Science Club, a Link Crew Leader, a treasurer of the National Honor Society, a member of the Girls in Government Class, and it goes on and on. She's served on ASV all four years, and this year she's the co-commissioner of clubs. She hopes to attend UCLA. I won't hold that too much against you. I went to the other one. After graduation, great school, and major in human physiology and biology. So now Pastor Max, would you come and lead us, and then let's all stand, please?
It really is because of a young lady just like that that I struggle with a spirit of jealousy from my high school days, but congratulations. You know, in the Book of Romans, it says one thing here, and we're in an election year and all that, and it says, "Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there's no authority except from God, and the authorities that exist are appointed by God." I just want to remind everybody about that in this season. Can we pray? So Father, we just thank you, God, that you gave promises to us, that if we lacked wisdom, that if we asked you, you would give it to us liberally and without hindrance or approach. Father, I thank you that you said we'd be blessed if we focused on justice and righteousness at all times. So God, I pray for our governing authorities, the ones that you have appointed, the ones that you have put in this place, God, that you would bless them. You would give them wisdom beyond their own understanding and knowledge, and God, that they would govern in a way that would exceed any preparedness that they'd had up to this time. Because we know, Father God, that without you, we can't do anything, but with you, we can do all things. And God, that's what makes Bakersfield such a great place, because we have so many that look to you and turn to you for their decisions and their wisdom. We give you the glory now, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Megan.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. And now I know Megan's off to work on the homecoming float. Thank you so much, Pastor. Also, thank you very much. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. We'd ask you to be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it's not allowed at other times. For safety reasons, no signs are allowed in the chambers. We thank you very much for your cooperation. We'll have a great night. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, Item A, we have a proclamation to Louis Gill, Chief Executive Officer of the Bakersfield Homeless Center and Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault, declaring Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Bakersfield during October 2018.
Mr. Gill.
Nearly three out of four Americans personally knows someone who is or has been a victim of domestic violence. We have to take a stand, and we are so privileged to have groups such as the Alliance taking a stand and supporting people. And so it is my honor tonight to be able to issue the following proclamation. Whereas domestic violence is an intolerable violent crime with devastating safety and health implications for every person, be they a victim, a survivor, or a family member, neighbor, or coworker of a victim. And whereas the Alliance Against Family Violence and Sexual Assault in 2017-18 provided services to over 2,300 survivors of domestic violence, and whereas the Alliance works diligently to inspire community members to support victims and their families and expand domestic violent prevention, whereas agencies and advocacy centers throughout Kern County need community support, that's from all of us, for their mission to decrease domestic violence. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our city, and we urge all Bakersfield and Kern County residents to remain firm in condemning domestic violence by aiding victims and supporting local organizations and law enforcement in their commitment to preventing future violence. And it's signed this day, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. Louis, we are so privileged as a community to have somebody such as you with such passion, such commitment, such expertise in making a difference, and I know that you're fighting daily to make sure that we do not have ongoing victimization. Thank you so much. It's my honor to present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mayor Go, council members. This is way too common. More than 2,000 people last year, 2,300 people that came through the doors because somebody that said they cared about them harmed them. It's not tolerable. And I can tell you, those are just the people that reached out, because the numbers are much greater. And so for anyone listening, anyone watching, we still have a culture where we're not comfortable asking the question. If you think someone's hurt, you think someone's in a bad situation, please just say, "Are you okay?" If they say they need help, please send them to the Alliance. That's what we want to do. Thank you very much for acknowledging this.
Proclamation to Mary Lynn Webster, Director of the Operations of the All-In, All-the-Time Foundation, declaring October 20, 2018 as Tommy V. Day, supporting the efforts of the Navy SEAL Foundation and the Navy Special Forces Community.
We are so privileged to be in Kern County, where we care so much about those who have served our country. We really, really have that privilege. We have wonderful services. Our veteran services are abundant. But even with all of those, oftentimes, there are so many needs, there's so much support that is needed for people who have served our country, and I am so grateful that today we get to celebrate an organization, a grassroots organization, that cares so much to support our veterans. And today also, we get to remember somebody very special, a U.S. Navy SEAL, Tommy Valentine. And we're going to hear much more from our guest today, from Mary Lynn, but first, I would like to read this proclamation. Proclamation, Office of the Mayor, whereas the All-In, All-the-Time Foundation was established in 2008 as a tribute to the memory of Tommy Valentine, a Navy SEAL Special Operator who died while serving our country, and whereas Tommy was an elite warrior who lived his life in accordance with the Special Operator's Code by being fiercely loyal to his family, his country, and his team, and who gave it his all, all the time. And whereas All-In, All-the-Time Foundation is a true grassroots organization and run by volunteers that are committed to serving both naval special warfare and special operations community through honor, remembrance, and dignity. And whereas although the immediate and long-term needs of our injured and fallen warriors are generally met through various larger organizations, the purpose of the All-In, All-the-Time Foundation is to fill the interim needs of the surviving spouses and children of our fallen naval special warfare families. And whereas the All-In, All-the-Time Foundation can never replace our heroes, this foundation strives to address the in-between years by alleviating some of the burdens families face when they lose their provider, such as legal fees, wills, estate management, household and auto repair, and many other critical, immediate, non-standard support categories. And whereas since 2008, the All-In, All-the-Time Foundation has increased to profile, to reach out to 50 states, and to even more Gold Star families by expanding its mission to include assistance for traumatic brain injuries and post-traumatic stress-related needs, as well as scholarships for active and retired special offense veterans and transition assistance for retirees. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim October 20, 2018 as Tommy V. Day in our city, and with this proclamation, encourage all Bakersfield residents to support our veterans and their families and learn more about this foundation. It's dated this day, the 17th day of October. Signed, Mayor Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield. There is something special happening this weekend, and this Saturday evening, October 20th, at the home of Tom and Kim Champness, there's going to be a very special commemoration. We're going to hear more from our wonderful guests, Mary Lynn Webster, who is the Director of Operations with All-In, All-the-Time Foundation. Welcome. Welcome home. She's from Bakersfield and now lives elsewhere, but she's impacting our community and the entire United States with her message. Come on up.
And let me present this to you. Thank you, Mayor Go, and council members. All-In, All-the-Time, and the Valentine family is honored to accept this acknowledgement. For the 10-year memoriam of Tom's passing, we have worked hard to honor the legacy in which he left, which was to honor the families in which he served in his community. Tom and Christina were, and Christina still is, a pinnacle in grace and service to everyone. She is herself a Gold Star spouse and continues to serve her Gold Star community. For 10 years, we have fundraised tirelessly. I am the only employee of the foundation. Everyone else is volunteers, and we work off my kitchen table. So we try our best to take every single dollar and make it worth a million dollars. So today, I thank you. Again, our event that we are hosting is Saturday, and the website for the foundation or for the event is www-allin2018.givesmart.com. Thank you for having us. Thank you again for this.
Would you raise your hand? Actually, would you stand if you're a veteran? Please stand, and we just want to thank you for your service, all of you. Don't be shy. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor, we have received five speaker cards this evening, all on separate subjects. The first speaker is Julie Hauser regarding Rabo Bank Metal Detectors and Off-Duty Law Enforcement or CCW weapons.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself. You might want to lower that mic a little.
Hi, my name is Julie Hauser. We do not live in your area. We live in Wasco. I saw an article on Facebook from Bakersfield Now, and it was regarding the metal detectors at the Rabo Bank Arena. One of the things it said is off-duty law enforcement would bring their weapons with them, and that is no longer possible, and that they used to bring them and staff wasn't aware. I made a call to the Rabo Bank Arena, talked to two people, and they said that any law enforcement that is off-duty is no longer going to be allowed to carry their weapons. And I said, "Off-duty law enforcement always carries their weapons." My husband, John Hauser, is retired law enforcement, has a CCW, always carries his weapon. And he said, "Any law enforcement will no longer be able to bring their weapons in." Period. So I contacted the Watch Commander at BPD, talked to the Secretary, who said, "Please go to the city council and bring that up, because there's going to be an issue, because all off-duty law enforcement carries their weapon." I also called Sheriff Youngblood, left a message for him. So my husband said, "We are no longer going to the Rabo Bank Arena. If I cannot carry my weapon with me, because I have a badge, I have a CCW, we are no longer going in there." So like I said, I called two people at the Rabo Bank Arena, and he said, "I don't care if they carry a badge. If they are not on duty and working at the Rabo Bank Arena in uniform, they will not be allowed to get into the events." Period. I don't care. And I said, "Okay, you're going to have problems, and you're going to lose customers." So I am here because BPD told me to bring it up to you guys, and that's what I'm doing.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to refer this to Safe Neighborhoods. I'd just like a little bit of background on where staff's head was at over the Rabo Bank in making this recommendation, and we can discuss it then. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ray Scott regarding Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee.
Please introduce yourself. Thank you so much for your service to our community and to California.
Thank you, ma'am. Ray Scott, Keep California Beautiful. Good evening, Mayor and City Council staff. What I have for you this evening is invitation for the announcement for America Recycles Day, which is November 10th, here at the Rabo Bank Arena in the parking lot from 8:00 to 1:00 PM. At that time, we're Keep California Beautiful, which is also part of that, will be releasing a statewide press release about the K-12 Challenge that we do annually throughout the state of California. This year especially, we've been blessed for the fact that we've doubled the amount of money we're giving out to schools this year to $38,000 compared to $18,000 last year, which then we get to recognize 90 schools for their efforts. This program was started here in Bakersfield by Walt Price of Price's disposal. It went from City of Arvin, Kern County, now the statewide. It has received national recognition. This morning, I just received notification that it's receiving an international award for school recycling programs, and this is something that I'd like to see more of or participation from the City of Bakersfield School District, because I would, of course, love to be able to give City of Bakersfield Schools some money and some awards, because all of the results are recorded by and reported to Keep America Beautiful, of course, Cal Recycle, Cal EPA. And of course, Cal Recycle, this is their, one of their primary school programs that they host on their website. And since, once again, this started in Bakersfield, the last page that I gave you this evening is about an ebook that is being launched publicly on November 1st. It really is about God's testimony in my life and everything that has been produced out of the City of Bakersfield. It's called An Ordinary Man, an Extraordinary God, but I could have easily subtitled it Bakersfield: Life As It Should Be, because everything that's happened to me in the last 26 years has happened here in Bakersfield. And I thank you and I praise God for this city, for the leadership we have in this city, and everything that I've been able to do on a county level, state level, and national level because of Keep Bakersfield Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next speaker, please.
Daniel Cronquist regarding ASC report card.
My name is Daniel Cronquist, representing the American Society of Civil Engineers. Volunteers from our local branch here in Kern County have prepared a report card of Kern County's infrastructure. We've done this to educate the public on the condition of our local infrastructure and to advocate for positive change. This year, our grades of our roads have received a grade of C-, and our bridges a grade of B+, which is slightly larger or better than previous years and the state as a whole. The reason why we're doing slightly better in roads and bridges than we have in the past is our $1.5 billion investment in local infrastructure through the Thomas Roads Improvement Program. We've completed, the city and the county have, in the last 10 years, 11 major freeway projects and 47 new bridges. These projects have improved traffic flow in western Bakersfield and decreased congestion. Even so, more than 50% of our 6,400 miles of local roads in Kern County are in poor condition, and more than half of our 600 bridges are more than 50 years old and will require increased maintenance. The money provided through federal and state one-time grants do not provide for maintenance long-term. That money has to come from local sources. SB 1, Senate Bill 1, provides $86 million over the next 10 years to our local city Public Works Department, and additional money is provided to the County of Kern and to our other local agencies. Proposition 6, which the voters will be able to have a say on in November, will repeal SB 1 if it is passed. That will then, Prop 6, if it is passed, will eliminate this funding, which is needed by our local Public Works Department. So the American Society of Civil Engineers, and I'm here, and we've prepared this report card, to urge that you, as individuals in the city as a whole, vote no on Proposition 6 in order to maintain this funding that is desperately needed by our local communities to maintain our infrastructure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cronquist. Next speaker, please.
Robert Miller regarding grocery cart controls and water.
Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Robert Miller. I live at 255 Lincoln Street, and I'm here for two gripes. One is a water bill, and I'm with Cal Water. My bill the last couple of months is $160, $170 a month. They're just my wife and I in the house. We have a couple of patches of grass in the back, none in the front. I find that our water bill through Cal Water is two or three times as much as it is in the mutual companies around there in Oildale. I have a rental in Oildale. It's $50 a month, and they have kids and everything else. So something ought to be done about this water bill that we have here. I don't know what, I don't think you can do anything about it, but somebody needs to start putting pressure about that. My other gripe is every one of you have experienced this problem, going into places like Walmart or Home Depot or the hospital down here, they got these little bumpy things that you walk across, and they bump. I don't know whose idea that was or why they are, but they are dangerous. I have seen people in wheelchairs that, not wheelchairs, walkers, trip on those things. I've seen them come out of stores with their basket filled with that and walk across, and they shake and they fall off. I do not know a reason why that those things would be there. I know that the City of Bakersfield can't do anything about that particularly. I think it's probably more statewide, but somebody needs to bring that to the attention, because I will tell you, they're dangerous. People have fallen, and I know every one of you have experienced that at some time or another, walking across those things. So anyway, that's my two gripes, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. And I know your experience with the shopping carts, too. If I could have art on the first item, can you reach out to this gentleman and put him in contact, maybe with somebody at Cal Water, and they could investigate his bill a little bit? Second item, if somebody happens to know what the reasoning is behind those bumpy things, because I don't know what they're called either, that we can let them know about that, too. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Steph? Mr. Tandy.
Councilmember Parlier, the American Disability Act requirements for the blind, they're supposed to feel the bumps with their walking stick. I think there's some debate in the profession about the effectiveness of them.
Thank you, Mr. Tandy. I hope the gentleman heard, but...
Mr. Miller, did you hear that?
No.
Did you hear to answer to that, Mr. Miller?
No, I didn't.
Could you repeat that, City Manager, please?
The American Disability Act, which is federal law, requires those things there ostensibly to support the blind so that they can feel with their canes when they're entering into an area where there's traffic. And I mentioned that if they are not universally accepted, there are many people who believe, like you, that they're more problem than benefit.
All you have to do is watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rob DuChau from Southern California Gas regarding natural gas.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Smith, city council members. My name is Rob DuChau. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company here in Kern County. SoCal Gas distributes natural gas to about one-third of Bakersfield, about 35,000 homes and businesses, mostly west of the 99 freeway and north of Ming Avenue, while PG&E distributes natural gas to the rest of the city. Natural gas allows your residents to heat their homes in hot water, cook meals, and dry clothes economically and safely. In short, natural gas brings comfort and convenience to your residents. Employers in Bakersfield also rely on natural gas for a number of industrial applications, and natural gas is used in transportation by Golden Empire Transit, garbage trucks, school buses, and heavy-duty truckers. Natural gas is part of a balanced energy portfolio that you and your constituents enjoy. I'm here tonight to raise your awareness of an ongoing issue in California about which many people are unaware. California wants to upset this balanced energy portfolio. California wants to electrify everything. A proposal which did not pass the legislature this year would have required all new buildings built after 2022 to be all-electric, and would have required all existing buildings to be retrofitted to be all-electric by 2030. While this proposal did not pass, you can be assured that more proposals like this will be coming. will be coming. These proposals are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gas and carbon emissions, and other environmental goals. These goals are laudable, but a cost-benefit analysis cannot justify such drastic actions. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you want to use only electric appliances in your home, that's your choice, but don't take away that choice from those who want to use other fuel sources. The fact is, virtually every home in Bakersfield has electricity, and most of them also have natural gas. This is balance. I'm alerting you that this balance is threatened, and with it, the economic stability of families and businesses will also be threatened. Forcing homeowners to replace their natural gas appliances is estimated to cost an average of $7,200 per home, and the cost of electricity would be about $388 per year more than natural gas. There is an alternative. Biogas or renewable natural gas is natural gas which comes from organic sources such as green waste, wastewater, food waste, and agricultural waste. We can capture some of this gas, which now goes to the atmosphere, and then clean it and inject it into our pipelines. If just 16% of the gas we deliver to customers comes from renewable sources, it will have the same effect on greenhouse gas emissions as electrifying all of California and at a much lower cost, and it is a realistic goal to achieve by 2030. You shouldn't have to choose between what some decision-makers in California believe is right for the environment and the reality of what the families you represent can afford. And with a balanced energy approach, we can achieve goals, preserve choice, and minimize disruption and cost. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent calendar items 8A through 8AP for approval. At the request of staff, items 8N and 8O have been removed from the agenda. A staff memorandum has been received regarding item 8AH, transmitting a bid protest from the Jacobson Company. An additional staff memorandum was received requesting item 8AJ be removed from the agenda to allow time to evaluate a bid protest received from Hawker Equipment Company.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve items 8A through AP, accepting the ones that have been pulled, AJ, N, and O, and also item C, which Mr. Parlier would like to have discussion about. And I would also note that I will not be voting on item 8D as I have a conflict there. My client is involved in that project.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. 8C.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, earlier tonight, we had a workshop talking about recycling centers, and staff did a wonderful job on that presentation. It's no secret that some of these recycling centers are not necessarily the best neighbors to their neighbors, whether it's residential or other businesses. And I just want to thank staff, the City Attorney's Office, City Manager's Office, excuse me, Development Services for their work in crafting some recommendations to make some changes. And that being said, I'd like to make a motion that moves staff's recommendation to reflect the need for a conditional use permit in all zones other than M3 zone, which the use shall not be permitted or conditionally permitted. And with that, I move this item, and I have a motion. Thank you.
There's a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearing items 9A and 9B for approval. Correspondence has been received from Southern California Gas Company regarding item 9B.
It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So at this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 9A and 9B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item? Seeing none, at this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A and 9B are now closed. Vice Mayor.
I will make a motion to approve items 9A and 9B. I will not be voting on item 9B as a client of mine is involved in that one.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Go. I just want to report back to the City Council that I had an opportunity to join the Sister City delegation to Saint-Jean-de-Luce in France, where we met with city leaders to discuss a formal sister-city relationship. I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, and they are very excited. All 30 of their council members are very excited to participate in a sister-city relationship. So we're looking forward to confirming and concretizing that relationship in June of next year. And so, thank you for the opportunity to the Sister City organization, and I look forward to continuing that partnership.
Thank you, Councilmember. I heard you on Facebook Live, and you did a very fine job in representing our community. So thank you very much. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Cal Water did an outreach effort, first of its kind, at the fairgrounds, and I just want to thank Cal Water for that. It was a wonderful event. They gave away a washing machine to a lucky person that night, but also the city staff that were there, too, Bakersfield Fire Department, Bakersfield Police Department, and our Animal Services, too. It was an enjoyable night, and I was out there with my colleague Willie Rivera, and thanks again. And on that note, next week, on the 25th, Willie and I are going to have our annual trunk-or-treat event at Plans Park, and it should be a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Did you pick a costume already, or no?
Still thinking about it.
Okay, so I have, I have two Mr. Potato Heads. So if you want to be Mr. Potato Head with me, you can.
That's it. Anyone else? I'd like to do a shout-out to Chief Lael Martin. He spoke today, he's the keynote speaker, at the Kern High School District Principals' Partner Day and did a very fine job in inspiring us. So thank you, Chief. Appreciate your leadership very much. There is nothing else. We stand adjourned at 5:54.
The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 p.m. Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting of October 17, 2018. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Go.
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith.
I am here.
Director Rivera. Director Gonzalez.
Here.
Director Weir. Director Freeman.
Here.
Director Sullivan.
Here.
And Director Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the Bakersfield Public Benefit Corporation items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the next item?
Under New Business, item A, Approval of Minutes of the September 6, 2017 Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting.
Move to approve the minutes.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. The Public Benefit Corporation Special Meeting stands adjourned at 3:32, and we will start our next meeting in just one minute. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council Meeting of October 17, 2018. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the workshop items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, item A, Taxi Cabs, Recycling Centers, and Non-Commercial Signs.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As we approach the end of the year, city staff is going to be presenting some ordinance changes for your consideration. The goal here is so that we can have these new laws on the books by January 1 of 2019. Some of these new local laws are a result of recent state legislation, some are a result of some litigation, and others in response to some of your council referrals. And rather than put all of the proposed ordinance revisions on one city council agenda, we thought it best to present them to you over the course of a couple of meetings. So tonight, we're going to have three presentations. One is going to be on the topics of taxi cabs, the other on recycling centers, and the last one is on non-commercial signs. The first reading of the proposed ordinances dealing with taxis and non-commercial signs will be on your November 7 city council agenda under Consent Calendar, and you'll have a presentation tonight, and then first reading of the ordinance modifications having to do with recycling centers. That will be later at your 5:15 meeting tonight. So again, the purpose of tonight is, again, to present this overview. Certainly, if you have any questions, please, please let us know tonight. We're not asking for any action on any of these items other than to review and file. So the first PowerPoint tonight is going to be presented by one of our associate attorneys here in the City Attorney's Office, Vidi King, and I'm going to turn it over to her now. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. I'm Vidi King with the City Attorney's Office, and today I'm going to be discussing with you taxi cab transportation law changes that become effective January 1 and directly affect our current taxi cab ordinance, specifically Assembly Bills 1069 and 939. AB 1069 was introduced by Assembly Member Evan Lowe. It was signed into law on October of 2017, and it's considered a matter of statewide concern, meaning that it applies to all cities and counties throughout the state, including charter cities like us. Like I mentioned before, the regulations become effective January 1. We waited to implement the changes because there was a cleanup bill that was introduced into the legislature earlier this year, AB 939, and it dealt with the regulations themselves. It was actually just signed into law last month. So now that we have both bills signed into law and becoming effective on January 1, we feel comfortable moving forward with the changes that are required. Just to provide you some background on the reasoning behind the regulations, according to Assembly Member Lowe, current taxi regulations are antiquated. They, the taxis are the only transportation model that is fully regulated at the local level. Taxis are in need of some statutory relief because the current system restricts competition by setting different, more onerous rules for taxis. So currently, depending on where you pick up customers, every city and county has different regulations that taxi cab drivers and companies have to abide by. AB 1069 achieves that purpose with additions to the government code. And really, when you read the legislation, it provides the reader with the sense that they were trying to put taxis at a level playing field with Uber and Lyft, who are only regulated by the state, as opposed to local city and county ordinances. So one of the major changes under the new regulations are that for taxi cab companies and drivers to obtain a local permit from a city or county only when they, the company or driver is substantially located in that particular city or county. Substantially located is either where the taxi cab company or driver has its primary business address or where the total number of trips that originate within that city or county's jurisdiction account for the largest share of the company's total number of trips over the previous calendar year. So really, it's giving companies and drivers an option of where they are substantially located. So for prong number one, if, which is the most logical one, every company and driver's going to have a primary business address, including a brick-and-mortar address. So say, for example, they have their business in the city of Shafter. They would obtain their permit from the city of Shafter, and with that one permit, they would be able to travel throughout the state and no longer be required to have a permit from every city and county that they pick up customers from. Under prong number two, it would require that drivers and companies collect trip data, and we actually already require that under our ordinance, so it wouldn't be anything new to companies and drivers. It's really a matter of providing them with options now. So they can pick whichever option they choose to. They can, they can definitely choose what city they want to get a permit from, and with that one permit, they can travel throughout the state. And they can definitely be substantially located in more than one city or county. It's only that with the new regulations, they're only required to have one permit. Other major changes are that companies and drivers will be able to set their own fares or charge a flat rate. They will be able to use state-accepted devices or technology to calculate fees. A city may set the maximum rate. So if the council decides to set the maximum rate, we will need to either repeal or amend the previous resolution where the council set the rates. And the city may continue to require the taxi meter, as long as taxis have the option of using other technology or device to, to charge a fee. So whichever method is used to calculate the So whichever method is used to calculate the fare will depend on how the company or driver is charging the customer. They're charging them by the mile, they'll require the taxi meter. If they're charging a flat rate, they can use any other type of device, such as a mobile app or another technology device. Now, the mandatory requirements that you see above, they, most of them are already in our local ordinance. We already require that drivers fingerprint for criminal history check, that they do a drug and alcohol testing, that their vehicles used are in a safe operating condition, that they maintain an education and training program. They'll not be required to participate in the pool notice program, which is administered through the DMV and requires for drivers' records to be submitted to the companies they drive with, so that any updates on their driver's licenses are updated with the companies. Our office and the BPD gave two public meetings earlier this month, on October 3 and 5. We gave two presentations to the taxi cab companies and drivers, very similar to the one I'm giving to you today. We provided frequently asked question flyers that summarize the law and the major changes they need to be aware of come January 1. We had over 40 people attend. We were able to translate the presentation and answer questions in Spanish. The group was very receptive to being able to set their own rates, including charging a flat rate. They were appreciative of the information we provided, and they're looking forward to the changes that are to come. Now, we're providing you a timeline. We are hoping that we'll have the first reading of the amended taxi cab ordinance on November 7. It will adopt the new law in its entirety. It will remove and replace information that's no longer required, such as caps and badges. It'll clarify that taxis can set their own rates, and it'll keep the permit revocation and appeal process the same, because that was not affected by the new legislation. Second reading would be on November 28, and if all goes well, it'll become effective on December 28. Now, if you decide you want to set the max rate, please reach out to us so that we can prepare a resolution and present it to you before the end of the year. And likewise, if you have any questions or comments on the actual red line of the taxi cab ordinance, please reach out to me. I will be the one working on it between now and November 7 when we present it to you. And with that, I conclude my presentation. If anybody has any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, on the maximum rate, so if I'm getting Uber, Lyft, I know what I'm going to pay.
Right.
And so in the future, if I get in a cab, I have no idea.
If you, if you're, well, if they are set for a maximum, minimum, maximum, okay, well, let me back up a little, sorry. So if they have a flat rate to begin with, they will have to disclose that to you initially, just like Uber and Lyft does. If they are on a taxi meter, then they will have to disclose that as well. So they'll give you the rate either way before you accept the transportation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I mean, you're already in. It seems like, I'd like to explore the maximum rate also, I guess.
Okay.
I'm not sure, you know, look at it.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to dovetail off of Vice Mayor Smith, regarding those rates that are set by each cab company, have we conducted a survey of the various different rates to see if there are possibly any outliers that may be extraordinary that we want to address in the future through a resolution?
Councilmember Gonzalez, I believe that currently we set the minimum and the maximum rates.
Okay, so the, but nonetheless, are there, do we have an idea of this, of the range of rates that are currently set by various different companies?
Vidi, maybe I can answer this a different way. Councilmember Gonzalez, all the taxi cab companies here in the city of Bakersfield, their rates are all the same. And so this new legislation is designed to make them obviously more competitive with the Ubers and the Lifts. If your question is geared towards, do we know what the other rates are in other cities that have other taxi cabs? Vidi may know that, but it's been very difficult to get, I shouldn't say difficult, but other cities are perhaps struggling with this new legislation as well as we are. We don't see any template ordinances coming out from some of the other cities. And for example, I think Santa Monica, they just have one taxi cab company in their city. So I'm not really sure where your question is going. We can certainly find out what the rates are here in town, but they're all the same. And we do have members of the police department here that may be able to expand on my answer, if that doesn't address your question.
Okay. Well, I agree with Vice Mayor Smith. I'd like to explore the maximums as well.
Okay.
You know, considering certain populations who utilize the cab companies at a higher frequency than other populations, certainly they're more susceptible to usury and other schemes. And so I want to make sure that we explore all of those options to protect those populations. Thanks.
Yes. So if I were to hail a cab, I wouldn't know the rate until getting in touch with the driver, and maybe the cab next in line has a lower rate. Could that be a possibility?
It could be a possibility. But they are required to now post it, if they have a website, they have to post the rates on the website. If you do a telephone order, they're required to give you the rates over the phone. And if they have a mobile app, they can list it there as well.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes, and is there, do you have an option if you have a flat rate, or if you are going by the mile when you get in, can you, can you?
It's really, Councilmember Sullivan, it's really up to the company and the driver as to how they want to charge the customer. So the customer would know beforehand whether they're being charged by the mile or a flat rate, and it's up to them whether they want to take up the drive.
And I should point out, Councilmember Sullivan, that we're going to draft our ordinance to make it very clear that that rate must be established and agreed to before the ride originates. But again, it's very possible for a taxi cab company to say on a particular day, if we're going down to LA to drop you off at the airport, it's going to be a flat rate. But then, when I return back to town, maybe I pick somebody else up, and I'm going to charge, I'm going to charge a different rate, or I'm going to charge by the mile, or I'm going to charge by the hour. It gives them the flexibility to do that, as long, again, as long as they identify what that rate is and they secure that rate before the ride originates.
And is it by the, is it a rate, a certain rate for the day, or?
Again, it's completely up to the taxi cab company, very similar to, again, what you may see on Uber and Lyft, depending on the time of day, depending on perhaps the events that are going on. Sometimes there is a surcharge, if you've ever experienced that. It's, again, this attempt to make taxi cab companies more competitive with these other types of transportation modes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe in leveling the playing field, too, but I know historically, taxi cabs have had some sort of signage when you get in a cab. Will that still be something on display in a cab?
Yes.
Yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any other requests to speak. Do you have another presentation?
I do. If we could just perhaps get a receive and file motion, that would be appreciated.
Vice Mayor?
I would move to receive and file.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Motion was approved.
So again, as indicated earlier, the second presentation tonight is going to be on the recycling centers, and making that PowerPoint presentation is Deputy City Attorney Andy Heglin. This ordinance is on your agenda tonight at 5:15. So with that, I'll turn it over to Andy.
Thank you, Jenny. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As Jenny said, I'm going to be doing a brief presentation on the status of recycling centers here in the city, specifically related to the regulations that impact those recycling centers. And I want to make sure from the beginning that we're clear on what we're talking about. We're not talking about these recycling facilities like SA Recycling or Sierra Recycling on Brundage Lane, these large outfits. What we're talking about are these small pop-up recycling centers that you typically find next to a grocery store, and they're all over our city. And as I'm sure you would agree, these small pop-up facilities oftentimes impact our neighborhoods with their noise, their smell, rodents, crime, and empty shopping carts. And it can be quite an aesthetic drain on our communities. Councilmember Parlier recognized that and asked staff to look at these recycling centers to see what, if anything, could be done to help minimize or reduce those impacts. So staff has taken a look at that, and we'll be proposing an ordinance revision a little bit later in this presentation, as Jenny mentioned. But before we get there, I want to just quickly go, give you the background of the regulations that impact these recycling centers. California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, or CalRecycle, administers the state's California Redemption Value, or CRV, program. And we're all familiar with this program, right? You go to the store, you buy a beverage in a can or a bottle, and you pay a deposit. And then, when you're done with that container, you return it to a center, and you get a portion of your deposit back. So that's the basis, the structure of this recycling program. Now, in an effort to make the recycling of these bottles and cans easier, CalRecycle has required supermarkets to have a recycling center within one-half mile radius of that location. So every supermarket, as defined by the regulations, is required to have a recycling center within one-half mile of their location. And this is called the convenience zone, because it's more convenient for the public to be able to recycle their bottles and cans. Now, the regulations define a supermarket as a full-line store that sells a line of dry groceries, canned goods, or non-food items, and perishable items, and a store with gross annual sales of $2 million or more, and a store identified in the Progressive Grocer Marketing Guidebook. So we're talking about a Wincor, Avon's, and Albertson's, not a 7-Eleven or a mini mart affiliated with the gas station. We're talking about large grocers here. But any grocery store that meets these threshold requirements must have a recycling center within a half-mile of its location. We have about 40 of these supermarkets in the city. Now, as I mentioned, a supermarket must have a recycling center within its convenience zone, or alternatively, the supermarket can redeem all of the CRV beverage containers inside the store, or they can pay $100 per day to CalRecycle. Now, you can imagine, if you're a grocery store, you don't want to collect the bottles and cans inside the store. They're stinky, they're smelly, they're not hygienic, and then the stores want to keep a clean environment inside. So this is not something that grocery stores typically want to do. And the alternative, if they don't have a recycling center in their convenience zone, is to pay $100 a day, which is more than $36,000 a year. Some supermarkets can afford that and elect to do that if they don't have a recycling center in their convenience zone. But some of the smaller supermarkets don't have the luxury of paying that large penalty. And so they're in quite a pinch, you can imagine, because if they don't have a recycling center, and they don't want to accept the bottles and cans in their store, they have to pay the fee. And in some cases, it could be cost prohibitive or make their store operations less viable. We have 24 operating recycling centers in the city. Now, it's important to note at this point that courts have interpreted these CalRecycle regulations to place the responsibility for having a recycling center on a supermarket, not on the state and local agencies. So the supermarkets must provide recycling services or pay the in-lu fee. So what this means practically is, is that if an applicant comes to the city and says, "I would like to place a recycling center in the city," it's not the city's responsibility to make sure that that recycling applicant has easy access to that convenience zone. We're not required to approve that application. We're not required to minimize our conditions or stipulations on that applicant. It's not our responsibility to make sure that there's a recycling center in that convenience zone. That responsibility lies with the supermarket. Now, we currently regulate these recycling centers through our municipal code, through our zoning ordinance. So basically, how that works is, an applicant for a recycling center will come to the planning counter, and will say, "I'd like to place a recycling center in the city." And the recycling center, I'm sorry, the planning department will need to know a couple of things, specifically where they're going to be located, and whether or not that's within or without, outside of a convenience zone. And that's important because it helps planning staff direct the applicant to the planning process. So there's a couple of ways that these applications are typically handled. One is through, by right. So if a recycling applicant is in a particular zone, they're enabled to, by right, come and through the site plan and review process, get an approval for the recycling center. The other way that staff directs them is to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a conditional use permit. And that process not only involves a public hearing, but it directly gets the public and staff, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, involved in setting conditions and that type of thing. So under our current ordinance, any application for a recycling center that is outside of a convenience zone requires a conditional use permit. So it must go through the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and can be conditioned. Any application for a center within a convenience zone requires a conditional use permit as well, unless you're in the C2, which is the regional commercial, the CB, which is the zone downtown, the commercial center district or zone, the M1, which is light industrial, and the M2, which is general manufacturing. So a CUP is required everywhere in the city unless you're in one of these five zones. And if you're in one of these five zones, then staff is required, essentially, to give you the permission to operate that recycling center through the site plan process. So you can imagine, then, that if we're wanting to regulate these centers, it's to the city's advantage to have the CUP be the approval process, because we're able, through that process, to condition the operation, the location, and all of those things that are important to the city, and to preserving the integrity of our neighborhoods. The site plan review process is a ministerial process, which doesn't give staff the flexibility it needs to regulate and control those recycling centers. The types of conditions that are typically placed on these recycling centers include the requirement that the property be kept clean, odor, and litter-free, that shopping carts be removed from the site by the end of each business day, that there are sufficient parking spaces for customers, and the metal containers, which are so unsightly, must be screened so that they are not visible from the street. They have to be painted a neutral, earth-ton, site-compatible color, and they cannot be used as an office, residence, or other purpose for human occupancy. And these conditions also regulate the hours of operation. So what staff is proposing tonight is some revisions to our zoning code that will restrict the number of zones that allow recycling centers by right. So essentially, we're kind of shuffling the deck on which zones are allowed to have a recycling center by right, and which zones require a conditional use permit. So like with the existing ordinance, if someone comes in and they want to place a recycling center outside of a convenience zone, they would still be required to get a conditional use permit, so no change there. The change comes when we talk about those locations within a convenience zone. And you can see here from the slide that we've basically, we're basically recommending that we strike the commercial zones from the by-right status. So now, all recycling centers in the city, whether they're inside or outside of a convenience zone, would be required to get a conditional use permit, except for the M1, M2, and M3 zones, which are all industrial-type zones. So that would enable us to control and condition the installation or creation of a recycling center in pretty much every zone that directly impacts our neighborhoods and the shopping centers that our residents typically enjoy. These ordinance revisions were brought to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended that they be approved after receiving no comments from the public. So as Jenny mentioned, these ordinance revisions are on the consent calendar for tonight's agenda. for tonight's agenda. And assuming that they are approved, the first reading is approved, they'll be brought back during the next city council meeting in November 7th for second reading, and they'll be effective 30 days after that. So by December 7th, these ordinance revisions will be effective. And code enforcement will begin to conduct enforcement checks once the ordinance revisions are effective to ensure that these centers are complying with new laws. So Ginny and I and Jackie Kitchen from Planning are here to answer any questions about the presentation or about the proposed ordinance revisions.
Thank you, Mr. Heglin. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The by-right, you can still have conditions. They would just be standard conditions?
That's my understanding. They won't be as robust as the conditions we can place on an application or the request for a conditional use permit.
But the, like, the conditions that you listed, that would make sense for by-right also, correct?
That is true.
Shopping carts aren't there, and that they, so, I mean, we would have those conditions on?
We can defer to Jackie.
Councilmember Smith through the mayor. So anything that's a permitted use within the zone district is subject to development standards that apply to all uses, setbacks, height requirements, those kinds of things. If we want to add conditions that are above and beyond the standard development standards, it would need to be through a conditional use permit process.
So if it's by-right in the industrial zone still, then you still would not have control of whether they left the shopping carts there all the time?
Unless we made some kind of overarching development standard change that would apply not just to this use but to any use, then the answer would be no. So, but through the conditional use permit process, you can add extra enhancements, such as limitations on hours of operation, placement and layout within a parking lot, and those kinds of things.
So the changes will not affect the operation in the industrial zones, is what I'm hearing?
Essentially, yes. And these changes also would not affect anyone that's legally operating now.
Right.
With the exception of the M-3, Councilmember Smith, which we're proposing to add to the by-right category. It wasn't a conditional use permit before.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman?
I think you have the same concerns as Councilmember Smith. You know, some of these industrial parks are now sort of high-end office parks, and the thought of one of these things coming in, excuse us from trashing up the area, I'm really concerned about that. I would have gone with a CUP, because these are very, you know, is it the M-1 that is the more of the office, the M-3 is the heavy industrial? Okay. And I can think M-1 would definitely need a CUP. Maybe only M-3 doesn't, but I get concerned, because these are high-end office parks now, in, like, Gossford Business Park, things like that. These are no longer, it isn't heavy industry we're talking about. So I would have preferred to have a CUP for at least M-1, if not M-2.
Mayor, I would just note that if that's the direction that council wants to go, we can still do that. When it comes before you tonight under the consent calendar, if you would pull it off the consent calendar and give that as a motion and a direction to staff, we can do that. We'll need to go back to the Planning Commission, but there's still, there's still time to do that before the end of the year, which is why we wanted to bring some of these to you tonight, so that you could have that type of input.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I was planning on pulling this off consent tonight, too. So with that, do you want me to just do that, Bob, Bruce, pull it off and make those comments at that time, incorporate it in my comments, or is that fine? Okay, I reserve my comments till that time. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I will move to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you.
Okay, and finally, tonight, we have a PowerPoint presentation by Deputy City Attorney Richard Iger, and this is going to concern non-commercial signs.
Yes, thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, Richard Iger from the City Attorney's Office here, as Ms. Gennaro stated, to discuss some minor changes to our ordinance related to non-commercial signs only. And this is, this change is a result of a lawsuit filed on July 6, 2018, and so therefore, it's necessary to amend the regulations related to non-commercial signs only. And again, I just want to highlight the importance that it's, no changes are being made to any commercial sign regulation. So that will be as-is right now. The lawsuit in question alleged a violation of the plaintiff's First Amendment right to erect political signs in a timeframe that wasn't allowed in our current code. And I'll get into some specifics of when they're allowed right now and what the proposal will change. So the lawsuit in question, it references the U.S. Supreme Court opinion in the case Reed v. Town of Gilbert, which was from 2015, and was a groundbreaking law in terms of regulating signs countrywide. So just as a refresher, because we've talked about this a number of times in the past, the Town of Gilbert issued a citation to a church for not removing the temporary directional sign pointing to their services, because they did not remove the sign one hour after the event was over. And so when this gets to the court, and what the court often does is they look at underlying facts as well. And so they see a city here that's being unreasonable, and so they made these rules and this law, kind of to punish this city, but the unintended consequences that it punishes everyone else as well. So what the court ruled was that any content-based restriction of non-commercial speech must satisfy strict scrutiny. And strict scrutiny is the highest standard that the court can apply, and it requires that the city, to enact that regulation, shows that it satisfies or furthers a compelling governmental interest and is narrowly tailored to achieve that interest. And as I stated, strict scrutiny is a very difficult standard to overcome. And so while the facts in that case were about temporary directional signs, the U.S. Supreme Court actually discussed other types of signs as well. Specifically, the court addressed three categories of signs: ideological signs, political signs, and temporary directional signs. Remember, our case is related to political signs, and the Town of Gilbert case is temporary directional signs, but we also regulate ideological signs. And so what I wanted to do is show the council and the public that the reason we're doing this change is because we actually regulate very similarly to the Town of Gilbert, all three of those categories of signs. And so as you can see here, an ideological sign, it's a sign communicating a message or ideas for non-commercial purposes. So an example is "God Bless America," or "My Son is a Driller," or "Ram Forever," the type of sign that just has a meaning that's not commercial but is personal to whoever is posting that sign. So right now, the City of Bakersfield allows those signs to be anywhere without restriction, but they could be only eight square feet in area. The Town of Gilbert, before this case, they allowed them to be in any zoning district and up to an area of 20 square feet. So the next category of signs is political signs, and right now, it is election season, so we see them all over. I don't really need to give a lot of examples, but these are signs designed to influence the outcome of an election. So think "Vote Kevin McCarthy." So the Town of Gilbert and the City of Bakersfield both regulate signs very similarly. They allow them to be up in a window that's around election season. For us, it's 90 days before and 10 days after. The Town of Gilbert was 60 days before and 15 days after. And the size, you can see there, theirs was a little larger in residential than we allow, and the same in non-residential areas. So the category that got the Town of Gilbert in trouble was temporary directional signs, which is signs directing pedestrians and motorists to a qualifying event. So while we don't have a category called temporary directional signs, we have special event sign regulations that is very similar. And so the sign that's up here as the example was the sign that got the Town of Gilbert in trouble. What you often see around town here is like the CSUB barbecue, our Piles Boys Camp barbecue, pointing or directing people to these nonprofit events. And so as you can see, the Town of Gilbert had very narrow time window, 12 hours before and one hour after. Ours was a lot more reasonable, but as we're caught up in this court case, we don't want to stray too far from regulating everything the same. We want it to really comply with the rules of Gilbert. Even though the lawsuit's not about this, we want to try to capture all of our non-commercial signs in one category. And so the Supreme Court, what they ruled was that the signs it issued in this case, including political and ideological signs and signs for events, are facially content-based and are neither justified by traditional safety concerns nor narrowly tailored. So therefore, the fact that they're all regulated different cannot survive strict scrutiny. And so our proposed solution to deal with this issue is to make our code comply with the Town of Gilbert case. And so once again, I want to highlight and reiterate that there's no changes being proposed to commercial signs. This is only affecting non-commercial signs. And so the biggest change is we're going to take those three categories of signs and lump them together as non-commercial signs. And so the new definition will be signs expressing political, social, religious, or other non-commercial message. And so to make all the regulations the same, we wanted, we thought, and we worked hard on creating something that would not create a proliferation of signs throughout Bakersfield, but would still allow people to post the signs that they want to post. So we came up with these minor regulations. So no signs on private property without the owner's consent, which is actually a carryover from what we have right now. And except for during specific times, every property in the City of Bakersfield can display one non-commercial sign that is up to an area of eight square feet. And that sign can only be up for 90 days after posting. And so that specific timeframe that creates a different rule is 90 days before and 10 days after any local, state, or federal election. And we broke this category down by residential and non-residential properties. So residential properties can now have two non-commercial signs. So you can have your "Go Driller" sign, and then you can have your "Vote Kevin McCarthy" sign. Or you have two different politicians or two different measures. Non-residential properties can display four, or up to four, non-commercial signs, and said signs can be up to an area of 32 square feet. So this would allow that property to still have the CSUB barbecue, and if that property owner wanted to support a particular candidate or multiple candidates, they can do so as well. And we wanted to allow a little more room in non-commercial property, because that's where you typically see more signs anyways, and we avoid the clutter in residential neighborhoods. And as I stated, all signs can only be up for 90 days, and the way we handle enforcement will be, they have to be removed for at least 30 days before they can be posted again. So that way, there's clear direction to the public on what they can do. And the signs, which is a carryover from our current code, is they cannot be illuminated. So the timeline with this is the public hearing on the ordinance is actually going to be tomorrow in front of the Planning Commission. And then we'll, assuming that goes well, we'll come back for first reading of the ordinance on November 7th in front of city council, and then November 28th will be second reading and adoption. And then the ordinance will go into effect on December 28, 2018. And if this all goes according to plan, this will allow us to resolve the current lawsuit and be in compliance with Reed v. Town of Gilbert. And I think we'll set a good example for other cities that may have to do this in the future. And so with that, I'm open for discussion or any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Iger. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the four per commercial property. Where'd that come from?
We were trying, like I said, to capture something that allowed enough signs of, like, what we see around town now, but not be too much so it's visual clutter. And from discussions with staff, we felt that four was a reasonable amount.
Well, like you say, it's election season, and I can think of numerous corners that have much more than that.
Well, it's, once again, it's four per property. Some of these commercial properties are more than one lot on each property. And then another issue right now is a lot of these corners that have many signs or illegal signs anyways. They're within the right-of-way, and they're posted without the property owner's permission.
I'm thinking Stockdale and Buena Vista, couple Kevin Macarthy's, couple Vince Fong's, couple, I mean, there's just, you know, there's probably eight or 10 signs, and it's one commercial piece. I just don't know if four makes sense. I'm not sure what does make sense, but it's my comments.
Vice Mayor Smith, Mayor, if I may, since this is set to go to the Planning Commission tomorrow night, perhaps the council, again, could give consideration to going ahead and moving forward with this. It's always something that can be tweaked at a later time. I mean, there are other cities in the state of California that obviously have to comply with this Supreme Court case. So what we may want to do is give it a shot, and if you think it's too, it's not enough, or you think maybe it's too many, again, we can always, we can always come back and modify it.
And to tail off of that, by the time this goes into effect, the current election season will be over. So we'll have essentially two years to modify or change the rule if we desire to.
Move to receive and file.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Iger. Madam City Attorney, anything further?
No, Mayor, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. So that actually concludes our entire agenda for the 3:30 meeting, and the 3:30 meeting stands adjourned at 4:16.